Drop the order. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba, here. Councilman DeWitt.
Here.
Councilman Slakta.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Forbes.
Here.
Okay, great. It's not on the agenda, but I'd like to have Councilman Slakta, please read this in the pledge of allegiance.
It'll be on here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment at this time. Anybody from the public? Like to make a comment?
I think I'll let you guys do all the work today. So have fun. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Anybody else from the public? Okay. Let's move on to item four then, review the capital improvement plan projects. This is green sheet sixteen oh five dash oh one four five. Carl, you wanna address this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, Anne, come on. I'm just gonna turn it over to Anne.
All right.
Anne, just briefly, according to our calculation, at the last meeting, the council identified approximately three million dollars in possible reallocation funds. We are not completely finished with the roadway. We've got about four or five items still to discuss on that, and then we need to get into the water and the parks issues. If we can keep the discussion at a high level, kind of what we got to towards the end of the last workshop, we might be able to get through this pretty quickly, only because we've got some finance and budget issues we'd love to talk to you about as well in this very compressed timeframe. And with that, I'll turn it over to Anne. Thank you.
Good morning. Anne Wright, Finance Director. As Carl mentioned, there were a couple of items that were not addressed at the last discussion, and they are on behind the green sheet, rows one through six, which were highlighted in yellow, they were not actually discussed by council regarding the funding situation of those. So if council would like to discuss on that sheet for the roadway and landscaping projects, those items.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Fred.
I know when I was talking to Matt after the last meeting, like the Spring Creek and the other restoration, those were all things that we could take the money, but he needs the money back by, I think it's March roughly next year. And my comment, and it would be to all of you, that it seems foolish to redirect money that you have to pay back if you're going to do the projects, and I think all those projects are worthy projects.
I concur, and especially because of the nature of the projects, I think we should, a lot of them have required all kinds of permitting processes, and it's taken a long time to do it. I know Spring Creek in particular, and so to put any hold on those, especially since they've been waiting for years to get to the point where we can execute them, I think we should just go ahead with those.
Okay. Greg, any?
No, I agree a hundred percent on that. I mean, there's no sense of rebudgeting if we're gonna do the project anyway. It's already been budgeted once, why re-budget and hold it off?
Steve? Peter?
Yeah, that's fine. The only point I'd make is, there actually are a bunch of things here where we're just not saying we won't do them, we're just moving them forward. A bunch of them actually were forward anyhow, so...
But these are not really that four. I mean, they're just like within a few months, the six to twelve months.
Oh, these?
Oh, yeah, the ones we're talking about.
Yeah, one, two, six. Okay, fair point.
Yeah, it's different.
Well, I don't think five is, but it's not a big deal.
Mike?
Okay.
So, we're done with the roadway and landscaping projects?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one point. One and four together, that's the stormwater master plan. My recollection is Abernathy Phelps is moving forward, and my recollection is that Pine Lake Preserve is none of our money this year at all. It's just Lee County doing some design work. Is that correct?
We'll need Matt to address that.
Matt Feeney for the record Public Works Director, yes, Councilman, that is correct.
So, out of the eight seventy-three and the two fifty, Matt, I forget what the exact number is, but it's four and change for Abernathy Phelps.
Out of the eight seventy-three, yes, sir.
Yeah, so somewhere in this eight seventy-three and two fifty, there is the difference between that and the cost of Abernathy Phelps that's not being spent this year.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, Steve?
Carl, would this be appropriate on the landscaping to bring up Hickory Boulevard?
Yes, but you can't take any action here, but if you want to bring it up?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. What I'd like to ask the council is that Benita Beach Improvement Association uses their own money to beautify Hickory Boulevard, and what I would like to request at some point in time is that they've got a landscape project that's gonna cost about thirty-six thousand, and I was wondering if we could, as a council, donate thirteen thousand to them to help out. You know, we never really give them any money. Last year, we gave ten thousand, so that's, I would hope that the council would, at some point in time, we could make that go.
And you're looking for that in this fiscal year, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Pete, did you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just to finish the point, so Anne, somewhere in that, there's money this year. The difference between eight seventy-three and two fifty ballpark, that's a million one, the cost of Abernathy is, call it four fifty, so there's somewhere between a half a million and six hundred thousand that is not going to be spent this year. It never was gonna be spent this year on the combination of one and four.
Yes, and I'd like to point out that four is a state grant, so that's restricted for that project.
No, I'm not...
The two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
I'm making a different point. I totally agree with you. I'm making a different point, which is, if you take the eight hundred seventy-three thousand and one, right?
Correct.
And you add the two fifty and four, the only project out of the two of them that's moving forward this year, before we even started this, is Abernathy Phelps.
Correct.
So therefore, there is a half a million or so that is available, let's say, this year.
Correct. In my understanding from Matt, and he can correct me if I'm incorrect, is that of the eight seventy-three, we'll need about four hundred thousand of that general fund money to go along with the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant.
Oh, it's, it's four fifty plus two fifty?
Was that not?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, well, all right, fine.
What you've been asserting is right all. It's, there's about four hundred that we had planned on coming out this year out of number one, and because of the Pine Lake timing being a little slower, that frees up four hundred or so.
So four hundred, not five hundred, that's available?
Yes, sir.
That you can add to your bottom line.
Thanks.
So do we have direction on that? Are we going to do something with the four hundred that's not gonna be used this year? Is that the correct number? I'm having a rough time here with this.
It's about four seventy.
It's just a statement that it's available, it's not...
Right.
Well, are we adding that to the list to potentially reallocate?
Sure. In my mind, yes.
Okay.
Fred, Mike?
You're clear on all of this?
Pete? Okay. Steve, Greg, Amy?
As long as Lee County's not gonna need it, as long as it's not gonna hold up the Pine Lake Preserve money, I mean, if they're not gonna do anything with it this year.
Yeah, this, there's a different concept here, which is, all we're, in my mind, all we're doing is pointing out numbers that are available that aren't gonna be spent this year, whether they never were intended, whether functionally before we began the process, or as a result of our process. That puts the money into the next budget year, which puts us in a position, when we do the next budget, to see what, to see the road in front of us. And we very well may put that money into the stormwater master plan. I'm not suggesting we wouldn't, but we don't have to make that decision now.
All right, I guess I was a little confused on the whole thing right now. I mean, we're doing carry forward, anticipating our carry forward, when I thought, when Commissioner Forbes brought it up, that we were looking to reallocate it for studies that we want to do this year, this budget year, that's where we're looking to save the money.
I think it's a little of both. Okay. All right. Is that fair, Carl?
I do think that we need to look at what pressure we're putting on the next fiscal year, because you don't really accomplish too much by putting it all forward by one year, so I don't think that's, you know, we're only looking at it in one way. We're addressing an immediate problem, which is basically the transportation problem, and we could be creating another one a year from now, so I don't see how we really accomplish that much.
Well, we can't, my view is, we cannot do the entire budget in one meeting. So the point is, we're just not pushing, money already is pushed forward, so to speak.
Well, right.
And there is other money that puts us procedurally in a better position, when we do the deliberative budget process, we'll be able to make those decisions. You're right. I mean, in other words...
And we already have uncovered three million dollars. I don't know what number we're trying to hit, so I think it'd be, it'd be better to do this process, where we have an idea of what we're shooting for.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, I think, Amy, some of the three that we already found is like this.
I agree.
So we, that's...
It may be carried forward anyway.
Exactly.
At the end of the day, it's gonna be carried forward.
But there are some projects, some projects, in my view, like stormwater management, anything having to do with water, has a higher priority than some of these other things that we're carrying forward, so I think we need to be careful as we do this.
If I might, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sure.
Not to prolong this discussion, but, I mean, basically, I see it as an opportunity for the council, in relatively brief meetings, to take a look at the CIP now and determine whether or not something's gonna be done this year, from whatever fund it is. If it's not, then we're simply kind of capturing those monies, and as the staff, based upon the strategic plan that you have put forward, allocates those monies in the proposed budget coming forward, then those discussions, when the council has the big picture of all of the finances for the city, not just CIP, can decide whether some projects are more important than others, whether we keep certain projects in the CIP but don't fund them immediately, and maybe it's not just next year, maybe we fund it three years down the road. That's all discussions for council to have during the budget process. Okay? All right, very good. You're clear on, you're clear on this?
I am.
Okay, great.
We're ready to move on to water quality, parks, recreation, and community facilities. And starts on page three, and have identified line items that are highlighted in yellow as potential amounts for you to consider. If you have any questions about any particular ones?
Well, seven we're not doing, right? But there is a certain, there's gonna be proposal in our council of reallocating some of that money to another purpose. Isn't that the case?
There is in the, in the meeting packet.
So how much is left if that purpose is adopted? I've forgotten what the number is.
Two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, yes. How much is it?
I'm sorry, that's what's left?
Yes.
Well, so we have an easy one there. At least two-fifty we could put aside, right? Because it's gonna be proposed that we don't do that.
I guess my question is, why is it proposed and we're not doing it? If we need to expand it, and that's what...
Nicole, we're gonna deal with it next, in the next meeting.
It is in your city council packet. Our bids did come over two-hundred thousand dollars over the three forty-five. We aren't requesting that we move forward with that, we are asking for rejection of that bid, and we're gonna relook at that project. We do feel that the numbers came in high, a little too high, so that's kind of the issue there. But this is, of course, something that is needed eventually, so it is up to council to decide if you want to leave it in, and then we would have to add additional funds if we did move it forward for a different time.
I also want to add, Mr. Mayor, council, that I had some extremely good discussions with the YMCA this week in another part of an area that the council had interest in, that was trying to find ways to offer programs that are complementary, will take some of the stress off of our own facilities or their facilities, and these are preliminary discussions, but we did talk about fitness room use, we did talk about the pools and the summer program when the contract's up, we talked about a number of things, so there might be other opportunities besides just expanding our facility. And we know there's gonna be a number of things to work out in that, but the discussions were very promising.
Well, I'm very pleased to hear that, because I think any kind of partnership with nonprofits and our recreational program is just, it helps everybody, so that's very positive.
Okay. Pete?
Well, can I take a shot at this along the standard that Carl set out before?
Sure. Absolutely.
All right, just to kind of go through it. So, one, I would move forward, doesn't mean we're not gonna buy, obviously, it doesn't mean we're not gonna buy land, but not this year, is the point. So one would be in that category. Seven would be... I think the pavilion gutters are necessary, Carl?
Yes.
Eight, that's eleven.
Eleven. Yeah, I mean, for, we did put them in.
And the same with the...
Well, if I might, the pavilion gutters are not as important as what some of the other things. I mean, we are willing to give up the eight thousand dollars or to allow that money to be allocated. We do not believe it's a safety issue. It could be, it really depends on how you look at it. Nicole, if you want to add?
Right now, we'll just cancel games, is what will happen.
I wouldn't do that for eight thousand dollars. I would, my personal view is, I would leave it in.
Council okay leaving it?
Yes.
Yes, I think that should be...
We're not trying to cramp the style of people playing games for eight thousand dollars, right?
So what priorities do you see here?
A lot of these, it's something that's already in progress, so we want to complete it, such as the soccer field sod, the ban shell sod, dog park, things like that. They're already in progress, and it's just completing them. A lot of the others that we left in are safety issues, so we kind of looked at it in that realm as, if something's a safety issue, we definitely kept it in. So, or if something we could push off for another year, we said, okay, well, that can hold off and we can wait. So that's kind of how the numbers came, came out, and as we looked at them. But, I mean, such as the additional trails and entrance of the dog park, we already have two entrances. This one came about because the city acquired the New Moon property, so it was, okay, what are we gonna do with it? And it was a connection between New Moon and the dog park to create an additional entrance. That, of course, is seventy-five thousand dollars to create, so that was something we were willing to give up, since we already had two entrances.
Pete?
Can I, should I continue, or?
Sure.
No? You want to? Amy?
No, it's hard for me to do this, because I'm trying to, when I went over this last night, when I was looking at this, I was trying to reconcile these decisions in light of the priorities that we've already set, and one of the things we set was parks. That wasn't my second choice, but it was everybody else's second choice, but I was trying to follow the direction that we gave to council, so I have problems with some of these things, and even the statement that you just made about not putting the third entrance, because we have, that's connected to both the transportation and to the park area, where we're gonna connect a neighborhood to a park, so, see, I would've said, do not give that up, but that's, you know, one person's opinion. So here again, these numbers are pretty much small, you know, they're not, they're not significant, so I'm okay giving up, at least postponing, one and two, because those are sort of long-term projects, but there's also, you know, I have somewhat of a problem with one, but, so if we have two fifty out of seven, I don't know how much we really need to get out of here. The children's activities pools, I think that I would be willing to give it up because of what Carl just said about having a coordinated problem, that's five hundred something. That's significant.
Yeah, but it's in regional impact fees, it's not, it's not coming out of the, I mean, the general fund, and it's impact fee money, and that's what it's slated for, for one, and two, I mean, we've got twenty-one parks throughout Benita Springs, so how is two pools, if we do end up partnering with the YMCA? You've got it at two separates, it's not like the YMCA in the community pool or right next door, you're talking at two different parts of the city. So, I mean, I'm all for that. I mean, as a person who used the pool when I was, when my children were growing up, I think it's just, it's inevitable, you got the park right beside it, you've got the recreation center right beside it, I just think it's a positive win-win, especially since realistically, the way I look at it, thirty-four thousand's what's coming out of the general fund or capital improvement, the rest's coming out impact fee money.
It's actually all impact fees.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
But the impact fee money, we recently learned we could use for multi-use paths and things like that, so.
I agree, and I would say, no, those aren't important also, but here's a, we've got a lot of trails, we've got, you know, other than Collins Trail being connected underneath the highway, there's, nature, the nature park and nature trail is fairly built out now, there could be more. I know that in the near future, when Logan pops through and the crew land, they're looking to do a park out there and a crew out east of town. So, yeah, we got, I think we got time, but I think that's important.
And I would agree, I would agree with you, Greg.
So I think, I might differ a little, but maybe not eventually, is my point.
What do you mean?
Well, what I mean is, part of the notion with respect to seven deferring fourteen is not that we wouldn't do that eventually, but the notion was to give city staff a chance to work with other nonprofits, to see if there is a way to provide the services in a non-duplicative way, that is, every bit, every bit is available to our residents, but yet save our taxpayers close to a million dollars. That, so Carl said he had one meeting, that's encouraging to me, but my view is, there should be a timeline on that, whether it's a few months, six months, whatever it is, and then we can come back and then look at this, because if those conversations don't work out well, then it very well may be that we would spend a million dollars of taxpayers' money.
Well, I guess my only disagreement with that is, is that we have three soccer fields, four soccer fields, why? We can't have two pools? I mean, they're in separate parts of the town. I mean, if they were side by side, I would agree with you a hundred, wholeheartedly, but we're talking a swimming area that is in a area, town that's, you know, it's...
It's more populated.
It's more populated, it's easier to get to walking, you've got the parks, you've got the tennis courts, you've got, I mean, for the rec center, they can use that in the summer to walk back and forth, I know they have swimming events that go on over there. It's gonna be a bigger detriment for, to go out to the Y for a lot of those people in that area. And, like I said, we've got twenty-one different parks strung throughout all of Benita Springs. Why? Because we do it for the entire city of Benita Springs, not just this area over here that happens to be close to the Y and it's easy to get to. And the Y is great, I think that we should partner with them. I mean, if that's the case, then, you know, the Y has a soccer field, it's close to soccer field down on Southern Pines Boulevard.
And so, what, the only point, I'm agreeing with you in the following sense, those discussions have not happened.
I guess my point, even if they do happen, even if we do get a partnership, I think it'd be great to have two zero-entry pools for both sides of town, let's call it.
But why presume that? Why not take four months and have a master plan that has efficiencies with respect to the taxpayer dollars? That's all I'm suggesting.
Well, I understand.
All I'm suggesting is a conversation, I'm not suggesting not doing it eventually.
I guess, I agree with you, I guess my point is, even if the conversation goes a hundred percent great, and they say, hey, we'll, we'll give your citizens carte blanche, fifty bucks a year, they can come and swim in our pool.
Right.
That's great. I still think we should have both pools. That's the point, I guess.
So why not wait four months or six months and just see? That's all.
I guess, I'm gonna say this incorrectly, but being, being a bureaucrat, to me, once something goes away, it's harder to get it back. We have it now.
But that's the point, it's not going away. See, that's the philosophical point that we were making at the beginning.
All right, as long as I, put it this way, as long as I got council's...
Absolutely.
That it's not gonna go away, it's not getting axed, it's getting postponed.
It's correct.
Okay. I'm fine with it then.
Absolutely. Greg, a perfect example is number one, right? Two-hundred thousand dollars, we're moving forward on land acquisitions for water purposes. That happens to be my highest priority.
I know.
But I'm moving that forward, it doesn't mean I'm not gonna suggest it wouldn't be done in the future.
I understand, it's just, I know when things go away, it's harder to get them back.
Not here.
I know you're saying it's not going away, but if we're not gonna start this project this year, in my mind, it is going away. It can be gobbled up by Collins Trail, or by this, or by that, rather than a pool.
Well, let's test ourselves here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Fred?
Oh, the only thing I wanted to clarify, which kind of made me muck it up a little bit, but the only reason I put parks as high as I did, we were talking about trying to create additional beach parks, you remember? And then, and I do believe that these trails are important, and that's, if it hadn't been for that, I would not have bumped it up as high as we did. I don't know if that, anybody else happened to think that way, but I agree with Greg and I agree with Peter, so I'm dead in the middle.
Dead in the middle? Head center?
I agree with both of them violently.
Steve?
I'm good with postponing it, as long as it's not eliminated.
Right?
Well, I thought everything we were doing is actually just postponing, not really axing anything, so.
So, if I might, real quick, or maybe not.
We'll never get out of here.
Number, number nine, I just want to address that. Council's okay with leaving that in at nineteen thousand? This is for the replacement of a current shade structure.
See, I am, because it's just not a lot of money, and let's just do it.
No, I agree, I mean, and I think if a project's gonna go over two fiscal budget years, I agree, okay, let's start it fresh and see if we really want to do it, yeah. The little things like that, that we need to do...
I don't see it, you know.
And the pavilion gutters, I'm fine with those two.
I'd also like to call your attention to item number three. We are required by ordinance to put in one-hundred-and-ten or one-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars a year. What is it, sir, one-ten?
One-ten.
Okay, so we obviously have about seventy thousand dollars in item number three that can be pulled out, okay? Assuming, of course, we're gonna continue to fund at one-ten in the coming fiscal year, which is what we would recommend for the ordinance. So if you're okay with that, and then...
Audrey?
I'm looking at the ordinance, and I just want to make some clarifications on it. So this is an ordinance that was done in two thousand and twelve. City council does not have to put money in, but once the money is in, they can't remove the money. So, I have the ordinance right here.
Well, then what will happen, what will happen then, is that we will propose less money in the coming fiscal year, so it'll balance out.
Right.
If council's okay with that. It's still the seventy thousand dollars.
Yep.
Okay? All right.
I just have a question about why is this one-eighty if we only have to do one-ten?
Because it's...
It's been since two thousand and twelve, so...
No, that's not the answer.
It came from the carryover of the previous project that was completed in this fiscal year.
Carryover.
We actually got money back.
Yeah.
We paid money into it, the beach was renourished by the county.
Right, right.
And then we actually got refunded money.
Right.
And we put it in that account, so it's...
This is part of the refund?
Yeah.
It wasn't because you felt you needed to fund it at a higher level?
No.
That's the question.
Carryforward.
Okay.
What'll happen is, on beach renourishments, it takes about ten years for the need to occur, and then we're just trying to pre-fund that tenure need.
Yeah, I understood that part of it.
If I might address, real quick, number nineteen again, which is the seventy-five thousand dollars for the entrance. Nicole and I did talk about the fact that there already is kind of a path there anyway. We could do, we could do some type of little trail or entrance without spending seventy-five thousand dollars, so we could actually accomplish something cheaper than seventy-five thousand dollars and get it done.
Okay.
We spoke to the sheriff's office about that, because I know at one time, they had expressed not to open it because of some problems with vandals or something coming in that way.
We haven't had those issues any, any longer, not that I'm aware of, at least, We haven't had those issues any, any longer, um, not that I'm aware of, at least. Um, and we do work with them
Okay.
all the time, so.
Well, if you could give us a number there, I would be in favor of reducing the seventy-five to,
It would be a complete guess, because we've never, uh, we haven't gotten any quotes or anything to do that. This number is based on connecting it as-is on a paved path, um, that's an engineered path. Currently, what's there is a dirt path, and, and we would look at putting some crush shell or something like that on it. But I don't have any quotes, so my guess would be ten to fifteen.
Excuse me?
Ten to fifteen thousand would be a guess.
We could always just take it out and have you bring it before, sort of like the,
Okay.
Well, that's the thing. That's what we're recommending here, is take the seventy-five out, but when the budget comes, we'll, we'll put in the new project.
End up being one of our first multi-use paths.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm attracted to this, because I, you know, we had, we, we're gonna plan all these things. We're trying to connect our, our, uh, our parks to our communities. And if we can do that for fifteen thousand dollars, I think we're ahead. Even for seventy-five, we're still ahead.
Okay. Now, Ann, I've got us down to one item we haven't discussed. Is that number twenty-seven? Do you agree with that? Okay. And council's pleasure on this. This would be a new shade structure, right?
It would actually be two, two new shade structures at River Park.
My own view is I would leave it in.
Me too.
I agree with that.
Everybody okay?
Awful hot outside, so.
And rainy.
Yes. Do we need anything else? I'm sorry?
What happened to the project that
Fred?
was brought up at the,
Microphone.
What happened at the project where you were doing a repair on a dock, and it was gonna cost more than the budget?
That's actually in the regular city council meeting. We do have a, a budget amendment and transfer of funds, um, for that one.
All right.
And then number twenty-one, exotic plant removal. Ninety-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Um, and this one, if you are going to leave in money for nineteen, you kinda have to do twenty-one. Because you gotta remove the exotics to get it all in there.
I'm fine with that. I don't know.
Okay, good.
Just leave. Everybody okay with leaving?
Yeah.
Anybody? Nod of the heads, guys?
Okay, great. Now, I just wanna warn the council.
You're responsive somewhat.
I just wanna warn the council that on your council, your regular council meeting coming up, is that there is going to be a request for a vote on what you've done over these last two workshops, um, on our understanding of these money, so that uh, staff has direction to handle the budget appropriately. All right?
Okay.
Very good.
And one other thing I just wanted to mention, I did bring up the last time about the skate park. Um, so we did just wanna give a little information, more information on that. Um, what we've kind of decided would be best, um, would be to let the sixty thousand go. That's in our regular repair and maintenance budget for the skate park. We did meet with our, um, we have a repair technician that comes. He said we could hold off till the new budget year, and then that's when we would request the additional fundings for the skate park and put it back in the budget. So that's something that, um, we wanted to just let you guys know going forward what we're gonna do with the skate park instead of, because we did talked about bringing it, talk about bringing it back at this council meeting. Um, but that again is, because our numbers are coming in very high. But we will during budget bring in those numbers again, as well as options, if you choose not to do the skate park, um, what other options we could do for that space. So it gives us time to do that.
Because that was just a repair.
That is only a repair.
And that was only supposed to last to like another three years or so.
Three to five, yeah, that's the best we got.
Maybe we should be looking at something else.
Correct.
Right.
Like a better, and, and would impact fees be able to be used if we moved the skate park somewhere else?
If you moved it somewhere else and build a new one, yes. Um, if you repair the current one, no.
So we'll pull that sixty thousand out of the general fund. That's not in the CIP, that's in one of her budgets. But if you're okay with that, we'll do that. All right?
Sounds good.
Anything else on this topic? I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, no, that's good.
I'm just talking away here.
No, that's, that's good.
So, all right. Um, now,
Anything else we need to cover with Ann?
Well, yes.
Yes.
The next issues are budget and finance, um, and we've got woefully little time, so I trust we'll ask the questions we most need to answer. Okay, thank you.
But I, I need to circle back. Um, on the children's activity pool, I was unclear as to where we ended on that.
We're pushing it back.
Pushing it back?
Pushing it back.
Okay. Thank you.
But not losing it.
Right.
Right, right, right. Not disappearing.
Okay. Yes, a couple other items relating to the budget presentation. To begin with, on zero-based budgeting, I want you to know that, that Carl has directed us, and that as we've done in the past, we do use, utilize zero-based budgeting. We start with what we need to do, what's upcoming in that next fiscal year. Uh, we do not use a flat. We'll, we'll just increase a certain percentage or anything like that. We analyze what we need, and that's how we build our budgets. Um, and we do can link those budgets to the priorities that council has set. Uh, what, what I would like to know is what information are you interested in seeing from us to be satisfied with, with the approach being used? Is there anything in the July meeting that you would like for us just to discuss, or anything in writing that you would like to receive relating to the development of the budget? Um, because we'll be presenting the numbers at that time. But do you want us to go into detail as to how those numbers were arrived at?
I, I think that would be great.
Amy, Greg, Steve?
Well, I mean, my only question it would be is, you know, just have the department heads available. So if we have a question on why a number is maybe from what it was last year to this year, why the increase, or why the decrease, or what capital improvements or projects are they looking for next year, and, you know, I don't need it in writing, just like to have, you know, a little justification, like if the five hundred thousand comes back for the pool, all right, hey, we're wanting to do the pool. Items fell through with the, uh, Y, and we wanna do it this way, or whatever.
Okay.
You're all comfortable with that?
Sure, and we've always done it that way. We've had the department heads available, so.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, we have.
Yes.
Do, uh, we normally present the budget, um, with information on what we spent two fiscal years before, or last fiscal year, what we expect to spend this fiscal year, and then what we're asking for. And I will tell you, I guarantee you that I go through line item by line item with the directors before that budget ever gets to you, in terms of determining whether or not we've got any fluff that we might be able to trim. So we, we present that budget. Um, it is rather detailed. Um, you've seen some of the things Ann does. It's worse than that. Uh, so, oh, God love you, I mean, but, I mean, the bottom line is, there's a lot, there's a lot to look at there. All right, it's very busy. Um, does the council need or wish to have any additional, um, easier ways to look at it in terms of summaries of what's being asked for over and above what we normally would do? And I know that four of you probably are not that familiar with what we do, so. Any thoughts?
Go ahead, Pete.
So I think what you typically do is fine. Uh, but, but there are a few things. One is, you know, one of the reasons why we started on this whole process of going through these items is because we wanted to have a lot of fun going through these items, it's because, um, when you look at the general fund reserve prediction that was put in last year, it's less than a million dollars a year out. Um, and it is a fact, just a fact, that the downtown project has put a tremendous squeeze on our cash resources. Not that it's not a good project, but just a fact that it has. And we have then, uh, and we pointed out the need to deal with the traffic on the corner. So it's, to come up with something constructive, and what I'm trying to think of is something constructive coming out of that is really going back to what Greg said, it keeps sticking in my mind from a few meetings ago, at the fire district, when they're going to do something in the future, they plan reserves for it. And so, what are the reserves that we need? Well, we don't, you know, have, McMahon hasn't come in yet with his number. We know it's gonna be many millions of dollars, but we also are sure banking on the fact that Lee County and FDOT are gonna be participants with that in it. But we know it's going to be a lot of money. Uh, and we know we wanna move on it soon, not in ten or twenty years. All right, we don't want people backed up there. So, it seems to me that it would make sense to try to apply a discipline in a budgeting project pro- process that gives us a reserve number. And what that number is, we don't know for sure, sitting here at, at late May, because of what, uh, McMahon hasn't come in. But that's reserve money, uh, whether it's out of the general fund, and as Mike said, there are, um, impact fee monies that can come from other sources for multi-use paths there, and of course, road impact fee numbers. So, that's some guidance, Carl, but, you know, I don't, but I, I think it's fair for me to say, how do we know what the number is? But we sure as heck know it's a lot more than nine hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in the general fund, which is the prediction that was in last year's budget.
No, I, I agree with Pete, and I think it's a good idea. I mean, I'm just bringing in whatever little wisdom I have from the fire district, is we'll use Nicole's budget at the Parks and Recs. We know the sun shades that we're gonna put up are gonna need to replace. Whether we put five thousand dollars away for the next five years, so it's not a detriment on one budget i- is an idea. Same thing with the skate park. Sixty thousand dollars of repair, had we been putting away five thousand, ten thousand for the last six years, okay, it's five years, so we put away ten thousand, twelve thousand a year on something like that is an idea. Then if something bad happens, we can always rob Peter to pay Paul, if we have to pull it out of that reserve, if something runs high. So, just an idea and a thought.
Amy?
Well, reserves are generally laudable, but the problem with having reserves for lots of these areas is that you're gonna tax people in the current year for something that could happen in the future, and they usually object to that, because it does add, you know, even if you look at it on a, on a homeowners association basis, um, you wanna reserve for the larger things, but not for the smaller things. Uh, like the skate, the skate, uh, park, that replacement might be as much as three hundred thousand. We probably should have done, been doing something about that when repairs are sixty thousand. So you, I think you have to be careful about, um, the notion of reserves, uh, because you, you have to pay for it some way. Getting back to the budget, I don't, uh, I don't have a specific, uh, recommendation, but when you do zero-based budgeting, you look at it functionally. And any material that you can give us to, to get down to the functional level, not every little minutia there, but something that says, uh, you know, we have to, uh, do a lot of photocopying or something. I mean, maybe a little bit more than that, but that, that's what zero-based budgeting is, because then you assess the function itself and say, is this worth putting any money in that area or not? Um, otherwise, you are looking at just doing the same things that you're doing in this year, and, and, and pushing it forward functionally to the next year, and saying, what does it cost to, to, to do that? So some of these summaries that you brought up here, I think are, are helpful. Certainly, uh, the example of the Parks and Rec, because they break it down in every little area, uh, you can really look at that and say, well, this is, this is what we wanna spend on, um, Benita Nature Place, or this is not what we wanna spend. So, so I think this is very positive. And it is helpful to see the, um, the employment records in the different departments, so I, I appreciate that. And I don't know if anybody else has any other interest. And then, I think when we look at, because we have these earmarked funds that are coming in from these various impact fees, the way we look at certain functions is, I think, is influenced by that, because if you can pay it from, you have to pay it with a certain impact fee, then you can be more amenable to having that function. So it's complicated, as you may know, as you do, you well know, and as we're learning. Uh, but that's my comment on the, on the financing.
Okay. Uh, Steve, anything? Okay. Pete?
Fred?
Well, one thing that I think we should really pay close attention to in the budgeting, and that is, if a project that's gonna cost, you know, four, five hundred thousand or more, make sure that if, that you really can obligate all that money in the fiscal year, and if you can't, then at least it ought to be brought to our attention, that the odds are, the best you're gonna do is get somebody hired to design it, but you're not gonna be able to get it out for construction bid and obligated and that. And then, that way, we've got two decisions. We could just, uh, put in that year's budget amount for the design, or we can put the whole tamale in it and it's taken care of. But I think on the bigger projects, we should do that.
Pete, you had something else you said?
I just had a few other thoughts that, um, and what I did was, I went through the workshop topics, and I said to myself, which one of those could pertain to the, your budget, you know? So, um, I don't know, they have the whole list here, but one clearly is the debt. Um, we have, um, twenty-two million dollars in debt payments piled up in the next seven years. Uh, then it falls off like a cliff. We've talked a little bit about this before. To me, it would be good to do what I'd consider much more normal, which is to have that debt spread out over useful lives of the projects, or at least with respect to the downtown project, have that debt match up mu- much more against how we're getting cash flows in from Lee County with respect to that debt, because those cash flows are coming in not, you know, as you pointed out in your email, they're higher than originally thought, but it is still the case that the lion's share by far is coming from Lee County under the current projections, well into the twenty-twenty's. So, once again, toward a notion of freeing up cash to use for necessary projects, and as it runs through the budget, I'm not, I don't know if you can restructure the debt in two months, but to me, that's highly relevant, because that could free up a million dollars a year in cash. So it does relate to the budget process. The other ones I had were, um, well, we have impact fee and impact fee credits. Once again, Ann, I mean, you, this is not like your bailiwick exactly, but, but it does kind of affect the budget. So, somewhere, maybe that, maybe that would lead to moving up the workshop on that, to see where we are. A third item is, um, as many people aren't totally aware, a huge part of the downtown project is not the streetscape. A huge part of the cost is actually the underground, uh, water retention system. And the numbers are anywhere from five million to ten million to seven million, et cetera. That's another workshop item. But the point coming out of that is, it's real money. It's many millions and millions of dollars. And I, and we've talked about this a little too, is something to think about, is what's done all over the United States, is to have a stormwater utility with respect to that. Not to kill the goose that laid the golden egg. I mean, I guess the reason we're spending this ten million dollars is some people thought that's why people will finally build downtown. But, um, to have a handle on that number, so we can see what a reasonable charge would be, if we agree to do it. You know, have the number, so a reasonable charge would be to charge for that stormwater utility. And that would go through the budget as well. So, um, now, now whether all this is possible by the time you do the budget, I don't know, but, but it does relate to the budget. The other one I noticed from the list that we had was outsourced contracts. And one thing I did notice is that the budget for that seemed an awful lot bigger than the most recent read we had on what we have spent. So maybe there's play in that. But there is the possibility of working with Astero, perhaps, on certain of those. And maybe Carl, it's more on your bailiwick. Maybe that's practical, maybe it's not. But, uh, it would seem like if you're buying bulk, it could present opportunities. So that was just from going through, nothing new in that, but I, but I, I thought it might be helpful, having gone through those topics, and see what relates to the budget.
On two of the items that you mentioned, um, we do have available to us, if council would like, on June first, for our financial advisor to come and present to council different options for refunding our debt and the impact on cash flow, if we were to do that. In addition, if, if there would be a desire to increase debt. But she, she's already done some scenarios and is available on June first to come and present those, if, if council would like to have that happen.
We, we were planning to put it on unless there's an objection of some kind.
No objection by me.
Okay.
Everybody good?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I do think, though, that we should have a workshop just on the downtown, and rather than looking at this like in isolation, the, the debt, the, the financing, the water utilities, the, you know, the plans. I think we need a workshop just on the downtown, so we understand, um, the downtown overlay and how it all works together, because I think we'll have a, come to a better decision if we get an overview first and, and, and handle it together.
It is scheduled for your June first workshop.
All right, so that would be great. So that would be good to incorporate that, uh, with that, as part of that, that, is our June first, is that eight o'clock or four?
No, it's a four o'clock start.
Okay, so, all right. We, we have more time then.
Ann, or Carl, go ahead.
I think I wanted to ask the council, I wanted to explain, well, to the councilman of Lynn, that on the, the summary sheet, uh, he referenced that the total dollars for professional and contracted services. The other summary that was requested, we understood it to be a request of ongoing contractual services, basically outsourced services. This list includes all contracted services. For instance, in, in the current fiscal year, we had a budget for the year, which was a large budgeted amount. So there's isolated amounts that are appearing in the budget that are not actually on, on that list of outsourced services. Um, the other item I would like to, uh, just call to your attention for your consideration is a, and this deals with, um, revenue elasticity from a standpoint of the rates that we charge, um, and revenue that could be generated. And that was a summary comparing us to other jurisdictions, the comparison of rates. So that's for your information and consideration, and if there's any guidance that you wanna provide to staff on that, or any further information that you would like, we will certainly provide that.
Well, I, I just would like to make a comment on this table here, um, which I, this is just a philosophical and strategic, thing that I think the council should think about. When you look at the comparison of rates and you see what kind When you look at the comparison of rates, and you see what kind of return we can get on alterations for any of these rates, the choices between an ad valorem tax, which is basically based on the real estate value, or what is essentially a sales tax on various items, you're still gonna tax people, so I'm not sure myself which one I think is preferable if we're going to increase taxes or any of these, I'm not suggesting we're going to, because I would prefer that we don't increase taxes. But in some ways, I think it's, it'd be more transparent if we do it on an ad valorem basis, because everybody will see it. The, the rest of this is sort of hidden, you just get it on your monthly bill. And I see that it's, it's intriguing, because some of our rates are, are low compared to the other ones, but I, I just would ask council to think about these philosophical issues, if we ever get to the point where we might wanna raise money through an increase in tax, just what we want, how we would wanna pursue that.
Pete, did you have something else?
Well, we're kinda grabbing the third rail real hard here at this, but I would, I would make the observation that on a lot of these fees, we're much lower than our neighboring Whether that means anything to us, I'm not, but...
Well, it might mean something very positive, that's the other thing.
I think it makes us look more attractive.
Yeah, I think, I, I mean, that's what we need to think about, and when you see about what kind of return you're gonna get for a small change in these taxes, you don't really, you're not raising that much money, so.
Well, what is, let's see here, for the electric, just as an example, a point and a half gives us what? You have it here somewhere, yeah?
$6,000, right?
Okay, mind, the way I, Ann, why don't you answer the question?
The 6,000 is, is if it was just raised .0001. If it was raised to the rate that is currently in effect for the unincorporated area, it would generate 946,000.
Almost a million dollars.
Correct.
And that's at the bottom of the page there.
Mm-hmm. Bottom, right-hand corner.
And your communication service tax, if you were to raise it just to the rate of what the county charges?
Right.
That would be an additional 732,000, assuming, and I'll allow for, you know, I expected Audrey to kinda weigh in, but, you know, subject to any legislative restrictions we may have.
And the city manager is correct, one of the concerns I have on communication services tax may not be permitted to do so. Now, I need to work with probably Carol Green on some things there, I've looked at the legislation, and it's a little ambiguous how it reads, and they do try to pass things year to year, capping the local portion of the communication services tax, because remember, communication services tax also has a statewide component, and a federal component to it also. So, I mean, that's something that if it's not capped, you could increase the number. As to electric, it would take, I think about it, it's a rolling, I have to look at Ann because I wrote something to her on it, I believe that's a rolling, meaning you can do it at any time of the year, and you're not capped during your budget time. The communication services tax, because Department of Revenue is our collector of the tax, we do have time limitations as to when we're allowed to increase, if we're allowed to increase.
So this, this, does this tell us that for a hundred dollar electric bill, for a dollar fifty a month per bill, the city would get a million dollars, in essence?
Yes. For an a dollar fifty increase.
Dollar fifty.
Right.
On a hundred. I'm doing a one and a half percent of a hundred.
Right, and the...
No, just the math, is that right?
Right. The philosophy of it is that you motivate people to use less electricity or less consumption, if possible, you know, there is some benefits, you know, in that situation.
Right.
And the money is unencumbered, meaning it can go for any purpose, you're not required to spend it for restricted, restricted purposes.
But, but then that also is a, a issue, because when times are hard, if people do drop their cellphone bills, you know, all of a sudden, we're looking at not getting that tax money in that we were used to, so.
Remember, communication services tax is not just cell phones.
Well, I know, it's on everything, but I mean...
Cable, and everything else, and people are going to streaming services, so you're correct, as far as how do you determine?
Yeah, and it's all just a pass-through, so I mean, if we add a tax on, we're gonna be paying it in the end.
Right.
And all the taxpayers.
Taxes are taxes, it doesn't really matter. Like, what, what would be the return if you changed the mill rate on the ad valorem tax, like at a small amount?
If it was increased to .8273, about 80,000, $80,000.
$80,000, okay.
Counsel, anything else? It's 8:59, and I'm told we need to take about a five-minute break, so we can switch over for the regularly scheduled meeting outside of this workshop. Any last comments? Okay, great. Counsel, thank you, Ann, thank you, Carl.
Thank you, counsel.
Public comment, any public comment at this time?
Yes, Rick Steinmeier, I'm curious as to what the re-nourishment of a Benita Beach, what it actually costs, the last time it was done, and are we putting away more than we need to, at 110,000 a year for 10 years, that's a mil, over a million dollars? That's one question. And gee whiz, I didn't know you guys are up here, we elected you all to raise our taxes and take money out of my pocket and put it in yours, so you can spend it, is that what you're all about? That's what I hear from most of it, so I don't like that, thank you.
Okay. Public comment? Hi, Donna.
Good morning, Donna Stone. I would ask if you would please add, in the dog park renovations, some additional shade, especially for the mid-sized dogs, it is really, really hot in there, we're going into our hot, hot season, and actually, all year round, people cannot use that section of the park, because it's too hot for not only the, the animals, but also for the, the owners, so that area really needs some attention, and I really wish you'd include it, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, public comment? Okay, this workshop is adjourned, we'll reconvene in five minutes.